I'd like to call the meeting to order this evening and if you would join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Planning Board Agenda, first is review and approval of the minutes from last September 24th meeting. I sent a couple of minor corrections to Michelle which did not change the meaning of anything, just some typos and things, and it looks like she picked those up. Does anybody else have anything else that they saw done now? Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes as read, written?
Same rate.
Standing.
I'll second the motion.
Chris? All in favor?
Aye.
Is she unanimous, Michelle? And then we'll move on to old business, and the first item is Brown's boundary loss with an update for us this evening. Do you want to state your names for the audience and so forth?
No one could, Chris, with Bonch and a contained attorney for the applicant.
Steve, I'm just going to land the department tech with EDR.
So just to give the board an update, since the last meeting, additional information was submitted with regards to the traffic study. There were concerns about the date when the traffic counts were taken, so GTS Consulting went back out on October 1st and took new counts. The updated report, I believe, was submitted to the Village Engineer. Based on the new counts, there were no significant changes to the traffic report, so all of the new counts were within the 10% threshold, which GTS knows is common in traffic studies for, based on daily traffic, the fluctuations and number of trips. So all except for one of the measurements were within that 10% threshold. The one that was not was about 70 vehicles fewer than the previous, I believe it was March 28th study. So, you know, improvement based on that. So that's the major traffic piece that's been updated, and then at the previous meeting there was a discussion on wetlands. A new wetland delineation report was submitted as well, and I believe Steve can talk a little more on that.
Yeah, just to walk through some of the site changes, there wasn't much. I don't know if you've had a chance to review the drawings, but we're layering in that next level of design as we move through the secret process here. Working our way from Genesee Street across the site, so we've removed that commercial block development on Genesee Street from the current site plan package or the current documents. We'll do site plan next, but we've removed that portion from the project. As you come in off of Genesee Street, we've added a curb cut to access Baldwinsville Supply off of that main.
Excuse me, Steve, do you have any boards or anything with you?
I don't think we got.
Oh, you don't?
I think we kept them.
Oh, really?
No.
I haven't seen them yet.
I don't. That was my baby room.
I don't, sorry.
Okay.
I can describe it. I mean, I can show you. I know you're familiar with the site.
Yes.
So Genesee Street here on your left. So coming in, we have an access point to Baldwinsville Supply off of that main drive, so that's to alleviate some of the congestion on Genesee Street. And then coming into the primary portion of the site, it's all the same unit count. We still have seven buildings, they're still three stories tall. All of the units are the same. We're still looking at 270 total units.
I've got copies of these.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a?
Yeah.
This one too.
Yeah.
Moving further into the site, as Nolan mentioned, we have our wetland along the northern edge on Curtis Ave side, and then coming through the center of the site, we're keeping 0.6 acres of that wetland, so it's about one acre wetland total. We're disturbing about 0.4 acres of that with the development. And then moving further to the westwards line of the street, the site is remaining the same as we've had it, same infrastructure, parking, service parking and garage parking there. Yeah, the numbers, like I said, have stayed the same. We're still looking at the same unit count. Parking is fluctuating a little bit. We have 450 spaces on the plan that we're showing you now. It still equates to a 1.7 per unit ratio, but that's going up and down by a few spaces here and there as we layer in that detail for grading and parking lot layout. But just to confirm, so you didn't receive the, any submittal information? Okay.
I mean, it would have gone to Michelle, not to.
I got the book, those big books that I put up there.
The traffic study book?
Yeah, that's what I got.
Okay. All right, well, we'll look into that.
And I got that, that's where Forbes Island.
Yeah, those are already there.
Yeah, that's different.
So what we had submitted was an updated site plan with the changes I just described. We have a preliminary utility plan as well for Greg to review. We've been working with him since our last meeting.
Yeah, I was hoping he was here because I know he was curious about the engineering of the wetlands and we kind of needed him.
Well, we're happy to, like I said, we've been working with him, so we're happy to meet separately with him if he can afford some time, walk him through it. If this submittal didn't come through, then certainly he hasn't reviewed it if he didn't have it, so.
They're not in those books, that's what I need to try.
The books are just the traffic study.
Yeah, so it would have been the traffic study.
Yeah.
There were site plans, and then that, yeah, that was the first.
No, that's not it. That's a SWF.
Yeah, and then we had a preliminary SWF.
What color was this before it was printed? Was it, that one, was that black and white?
Actually, I have your copy.
Yeah.
Like, should we be looking for a color one?
No, it wasn't color.
Okay.
Just black and white, my site plans, yeah.
These all seem to have color in their way?
Is that the SWF? Yeah, that's a SWF, okay.
Yeah, but not the site plan?
Because it all would have come together, so.
I just put that in the big box with a couple of those books and those other documents that I put up there.
Okay, well, we can forward it to you.
Yeah, this is informational tonight in a way, and I think we're, you know, holding on additional information that you're working out with Greg and waiting for the public hearing.
Yeah, so I can confirm if he received it. If not, we can distribute it first thing tomorrow, make sure everyone has it.
Yeah.
And then just looking forward to a public hearing next month. That would be the plan for November. I know your schedules might get tougher here toward the holidays, but.
Actually, we're changing the November meeting, so Jamie will be in touch about that, but we're moving it, we're moving it to the 19th.
Okay.
Mostly because it's two days before Thanksgiving, and we want to get as much input as we can.
Yeah, make sure.
So. Where's the entrance to Agway? I'm not seeing it.
So it is.
I see it's one of the entrance.
Okay.
This is the building there.
Can I see yours?
Yep.
Commercial buildings, one there.
Yeah, that's fine.
So.
Oh, here.
And so that location avoids their parking, because we don't want to go right through what parking they have.
Yeah.
It also sets up perpendicular to our drive, and then potentially, should commercial development happen along Genesee Street, potential intersection there in the future.
So Steve, I think that, I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think that may be a large problem for them with their tractor trailers. They have sleeper cab tractor trailers that come in there.
Right. So I thought we had talked about tractor trailers still being able to come in off of Genesee Street.
I don't recall that conversation, but.
Because you're right, that would.
Actually, the original plan that you had, I spoke with them, and it was too tight. Right now it's tight, but they, the types of deliveries they get, I think, from Canada and so forth, the tractor trailers are sleeper cabs, so they're very light.
Yeah, that's too tight for that, okay.
So I'm not sure that's beneficial.
Okay.
And so the commercial block wasn't really part of the site plan approval originally anyway, but you've now removed that completely from the project?
Correct.
Okay. So what are some of the things that we asked for, just to make sure we're getting all that information before the November meeting, Jamie? We are looking for landscape plans, the drainage engineering for the site. There were about four things.
So in that set, there is a preliminary landscape plan.
Okay, the traffic study, which we got.
Correct, and there is a utility plan that we can talk through with Greg, where we're showing water service, sanitary, storm.
So for us laypeople who are not engineers, can you review with us the infrastructure and how you're handling the wetland in the green area?
Sure.
So that we know what we're gonna, what we would see.
So we're not disturbing that area along, there's a narrow band north of our development between our parking and the Curtis Ave property line, so we won't be disturbing 0.6 acres total. So it's that stretch, and then as it cuts through our green space as well, right there.
Right.
So that will remain as a wetland.
Would you like this back so you could be van? Might be better than a knee over here.
So the, so I'm looking at C-100 here, so there's the narrow band here along the north, and then that would be entering a culvert under our development, so there is a portion of the wetland there that we would be disturbing. And then it would daylight in our green space and go through that central square, again, undisturbed wetland, so it would have the appearance of a wetland, but we would have landscape along the side of it and try to make it a feature. And then it would enter another culvert and go south through the detention area. We've reserved a large portion of the southern part of the site for stormwater management. And the wetland, the off-site water, because we have a significant amount of off-site stormwater coming through, that will continue to pass through. We're not treating that, we're not detaining that water.
Okay.
That would still pass through. We are treating on either side of it, if you look at C-300 here, I know this is so small, but the wetland, the off-site stormwater will come through here, and then these are our detention ponds on either side of it for our stormwater.
Okay.
And then all of it still goes.
And it still continues the same path that it was originally taking along the railroad tracks and discharged to the river, correct?
That's correct, yep.
So the, so the feature in the green area, would that be planted? Would it be aerated? It would be what?
So we would.
Do we know yet?
We don't have details for that yet.
Yeah.
We know that it's going to be, we're still trying to keep that central green space because that is a nice amenity, and it will function as that central square, but we're going to lose that portion of it as usable space because it still has to function as the wetland.
The wetland.
As the stormwater pass through for the site. But in terms of the detail of how we can make that as much of an amenity as possible, we haven't gotten there yet.
Understood.
But we want to accentuate that with planting on either sides and still make it as usable as possible.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No, just, how close is this to this?
Pocket lane?
Is that fence in there?
The left of the entry.
Right, I think they looked at that width before when you asked that question because it was, it was straighter and it clipped the corner, and we brought that to their attention. I think that's why it's.
Slightly.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was different between Google Maps and survey. I think it is, looks like it. So he's asking, Andrew's asking about where it looks like this flips, evil surprise supplies corner.
We're working through that with them.
Okay.
We are, yeah, we, then, or that triangular portion, more discussion with them. We understand we're going right through it, so.
Okay, so I think, Jamie, we just stay on the course till the public hearing and.
Yeah, and I just wanted to remind you that Michelle did forward everyone electronic religion, so make sure you look at it, it's all the secret documents and for the public. They should know that Michelle is going to post that, the full electronic folder on the website.
Okay.
So we'll be ready for, you know, the further, the public hearing, which is not for the whole project, but for the secret portion of the project, making sure that there's no negative environmental impacts. So we are, I am going to republish the notice once you, we take an official, you know, vote on the, on the change of date, so November 19th we'll be here for the.
Right.
Public hearing.
Okay, anybody else have anything additional? Thank you for the update, and we'll see you in November.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm going to stop. I was going to save those till the end, but now I'm feeling like I'm going to be rude. I wanted to introduce our newest board member, which is James Miller. I was going to take a fan for it at the end, but now I feel like you're sitting there and no one knows who you are. So welcome to the board. At the end of the meeting, we'd love to hear a little bit about you. Sorry. Forbes Island is next on the agenda. Where's the shuffling papers?
Yeah, I was going to let you guys all get ready, so.
A lot of papers coming.
I'm Von Errol with CHA Consulting here on behalf of the Forbes Island project. So at our last meeting, we were asked to look at the architecture of the building, provide a revamped landscaping plan that was more similar to the previous, and I think those were really the two major things.
Andrew had a concern about the dumpster too, which we worked through, right?
Yes, which we talked through, how it's not the most ideal location, but it's really the only one that works.
I think we worked through that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess I will open it up to the board for any questions or comments on what we've resubmitted.
So you sent the light mixture cut?
Yeah, yes, to match what's out there currently.
Which is the Village standard?
So there's just the photos, unfortunately.
The photos that were separate?
Yes, as you might have seen, Lucille Alverici passed away right before the submission deadline.
Oh, no, it did not.
So the Alverici family was a little distracted, not that this project's not important, but obviously, family comes first. So we don't have full elevations, we've got the example photos. We can certainly provide elevations now that they've worked through things.
So do you want to run through these photos?
Yeah.
Or do you have a copy, or do you want to borrow one?
I do have a copy. So I forget which order they're in for you guys, but I'll just go through them in the order that I have. So this, these first two are the Tree Line project that they're constructing, which is the same building, is the 24 unit that is proposed. So this is an example of colors and materials. It's obviously still in construction here, and it does not have the cupolas that were added for this project. This is the end unit of the six-unit apartment building here, and then this would be facing Lock Street with the garage entrances, and then this would be the rear facing the river. So this is built in Timberbanks currently, that's a four-unit building, so you just chop this two-unit and add it, so it'd be six. They don't have any six units in Timberbanks, they're all fours and twos currently, but because of the site layout here, they're going to go to a six unit. And then this is just a photo of Forbes Island. I assume you're all very familiar with it, but just to show how they all flow together, and we believe they work very nicely together.
Any questions or comments? You said my piece of the last meeting.
I don't know why I thought they were all three-story.
The townhomes or the 24 unit?
The 24 is, is that?
That is three-story.
That is three-story.
Yes.
That's a four, it'll be a six, it'll be.
Sorry.
Now, do you like, I mean, I, anyway, I'm not really a fan of this. As everyone can see, this is just very bland.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I don't know if it gets more bland than that. I mean, obviously, what you're doing over on Buckley Road, the stone just.
The variances, yeah.
Especially when the.
Right.
Where's the existing?
The core feeling.
Yeah, the existing that's there at least has some stone on the bottom, so to go away from that look would just.
We could certainly, so if you would like stone on the.
Finished.
Yeah.
I think the roof line is a problem over the garages.
Yeah, it looks like a bunch of little smaller houses, like, I don't know.
So there is stone on these.
At the very bottom.
Yeah.
I think it's like all the white garage doors. So that's a point, not noticing it. We need more.
It looks like the whole first story on the existing, so it doesn't.
Yeah, we could certainly change where that stone comes up to on these houses.
Just more, I mean, again, as it flows down the road.
Yeah.
If it's the same project, you'd kind of expect some sort of continuity, I guess.
And it almost makes that white garage door pop, it'd be the access point, obviously as the door.
Would you prefer a different colored garage door?
Yeah, probably like bronze or. I still think the roof is, the roof line's kind of, it kind of is the tail wagging the dog. And I'm just going to restate, which I said at the last meeting, is I'm not fond of this because I don't really care for the articulation and the facades compared to what your previous submittal was for the original PDD. Actually, would you mind showing that to Mr. Miller, who's, you don't have.
I do not have that.
I think I do. Can you bear with me for just one minute?
I'm not going to be honest, I'm going to say this looks like everything you see in the south for subdivisions, which is what we would want to avoid.
Yes.
I don't think this has got the color.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's not much, a huge garage door, to his point, the garage door is very big and white, and then you have a small next to the entry.
On the first floor, that's the biggest one.
Yeah, so, yeah, you ask.
So the garage door is a two-car garage, obviously.
Right.
So it's difficult to reduce that without.
I don't, I don't have one that you showed in the name.
The garage door or something, or glass or something. I was just going to say that cutout or something, something about the door, yeah.
That's it, it'd have to be a single door.
Yeah, so.
I mean, if you do two doors, then you're adding, I mean, by the time you add that to six units, you add in the two or three feet between, that's another 15 or 20 feet and the building doesn't fit.
Yeah.
So maybe a way to get to this is, in concept, do we approve the apartment building, not approve, wrong word. Do we, do we like the apartment building and the smaller apartment homes concept versus what was originally shown? And is our beef with the architectural, or, I'm just trying to facilitate some responses?
It could be a little old. I mean, it's a significant change from the original PDD, so I mean, that has to be noted, but as was listed in the attached paper, there's a reason that that can't be achieved, so we have to consider that.
Right.
I agree with everyone else here in terms of, this would need to feel cohesive, not this apartment and then that apartment and this apartment, you know, kind of piecemeal drop in, so I think that would be an important part of it. I agree with apartment homes in terms of seeming bland and the garage definitely, kind of, sticking out more than even the entirety of the homes, I think. Those would be my main cause. Again, no. Again, knowing that there's limitations that the developer has, is to be considering also, understanding that the neighbors across the street, Chris, they want to see some completion on this project, I think that's weighing, at least for me too, in considering what it currently is, which is just a grassy area.
So, if I understand correctly, we have to be referred back to the village board, and then we have to come back to this board?
We have to go to the A R B, I think, before you go to the village board, right?
Yes, we have, we have put all these things before the A R B in the past, so...
Yeah, so we just go to the A R B, and then to the board to amend the P D D, but we have to provide...
Recommend.
Recommendation for the P D D.
Correct. Only 50 more steps to go.
With a very tight timeline to get it built.
So, I mean, we have our next meeting coming up, that you're going to make some modifications?
Yes.
Okay, so we have an early November meeting, and then we can send it to the town board and A R B, basically, within that timeframe. Once we see it, right, the A R B meets on, like, as needed basis?
Well, they actually have regular meetings.
Do they?
Unless there's no business.
Got it. What's, when's the next regular meeting of the A R B?
First Monday.
First Monday of the month, so it could go early December, and then it can go, yeah, I mean, if our, if our recommendation is accepted...
One day before A R B.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One day before, for A R B, so I think we can accomplish it at the next meeting, if, if the application timeframe is met, which would be...
A R B's going to have a final say anyway on the architecture side of it.
No, no, that's worth it. December 2nd.
Okay, so far, oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about the December meeting.
December 2nd.
Yeah, I think another thing that I'm concerned about with the garage is that they are so garage-forward, like a housing development versus a village.
Exactly.
Where I think sometimes do, but generally, garages are behind, and I, that's definitely a housing development thing is garage-forward.
So, existing, all the garages are off to the side.
Off to the side.
Yes, and not...
Not the focal point.
Yeah.
I think that's maybe what, one of those things that's bothering everyone else.
So, you know, there's a lot of house, you know, there, but it's all set back, behind. And again, being such a very bland door, there's, there's not windows, I mean, that is...
Well, if you had cookie cutter as it comes, rectangular windows, even, not just one big wide one, but spaced a couple across, that would give it some architectural design.
Where they're the same size as the panels, fourth or fifth, we'll know.
Well, how many panels are there in the door?
I don't know. It depends on which door they get, but I think we're talking about the same thing, where you replace...
Like, one, one of the four, you want to take the second one from the top, and that's where you would put it across.
Exactly.
Yes, I think that would add some nicer design.
Okay.
And maybe, color-wise, you want something that's that bright.
Yeah, and certainly change the color.
And then just add some of the stone that's coming up to, I would imagine, above that.
To above the window, or above the door, or something?
Some place in the front of the garage door, I think something has to be a little bit more special.
That's up to the first floor, that's up above that garage door.
I would say up to the roofline, because that would match the existing apartment that's already constructed.
That's a good point, be consistent with that designing, that's a great point, yeah. Yeah. Just something to bring it up a bit.
So...
A little bit more special.
Are we talking, like, where this white strip is, or level with the door?
I would stay up to that white floor.
I was just going to say, I would agree.
I mean, that helps a little bit to...
Contamination or...
I totally agree with that, it will definitely make it a little bit more special.
Okay.
Yeah, no, because I'm at the top of the chart.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I like it.
Anything else?
And it helps, it's still, it's still just glaring out, you feel like you're walking down nappy to get into that door, like, that's hard for me to get around, I mean, it's good to have a two-car garage, I...
With a small entry.
Is it that imperative that we have a two-car garage, you know, for these?
I think, in this climate, it's definitely desired, if you have two people, you definitely want to be able to put both cars inside.
Fighting with their spouses over who gets the car in the garage.
I mean, drive-through, the average neighborhood, how many cars are in the driveway still with a two-car garage?
Yeah, but I think if you ask most people if they could fit both cars in the garage, they would all take that every day.
Yeah.
It's just unfortunate that we're not at that one.
Is there an indoor inside floor plan?
We have not provided that, but we can certainly get that for you, so you can see.
Because I suspect you've set the entry door back and the garage forward to make more usable space in the standard, like, having it?
Yes.
So, we can certainly...
That's the device to create a larger living space.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh-uh, looks like it would be kind of dark in there.
Well, the windows are all on the baser sides. There's not a single side, there's nothing on the front.
Oh, that's a good point, there's definitely nothing on the other side.
Signs of the building where there are the ends.
Yeah, that's something the board would like to see, we could look at that.
Ugly, no offense, but...
If you added that, the vanity...
So, no offense to you.
If you added that, it would not only raise the value, because people are going to want the ends, and in fact, they have additional light coming in the sides, it would make... I think one thing that would be good to see, this picture, the back is bordering a street, so the outlet from the back of the apartment home is coming out to a sidewalk. Would, would that be what you'd be proposing for this location? I know this is an existing building, so it's a different setup, you know?
I guess, are you talking about having a sidewalk connection out to the trail? Or just a patio?
Yeah, like, if there, if there's not going to be a connection to the trail, would that be a patio area?
Yeah.
So, if that was what you'd want to propose, that'd be something, I just want to see what that could look like. And maybe there's another option somewhere else that you just don't have a picture in here for, that...
Somebody what's existing.
Yeah.
Anything else, anybody?
Just that the deadline for submission is November 5th, to make it to the November meeting, which is November 19th.
19th, yeah. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, everybody, did I listen to cut?
Yes, the packet?
Yeah, I just didn't know if everybody saw one or got one. Next on the agenda, we have Gentry Road discussion.
Good evening, Julian Clark with Family Engineering, here with Carl Ashley, the owner and developer of the property. He's looking to develop the 88 years on Gentry Street, off of Tappan. We presented a couple times to the board before, different layouts. This is a newer layout, because he was able to acquire a small piece of land on the north side, so he could connect to Hunter Drive, and it eliminated a previous connection we had to tap in on the narrow, the narrow part of property up here on Tappan. It's a 26-lot layout, an R1 zone, all lots are 7,500, with 75-foot width. And, we've talked before about Gentry Street, which is currently not in a village right-of-way. And Mr. Ashley's in discussions with the cemetery, to come up an agreement, so that we can rebuild the road, and then turn it over to the village. He's waiting on a letter from the cemetery for their agreement of that. The one discussion point we'd like to have tonight is, we'd like to reduce the front and rear setbacks from 40 to 30 feet, and I believe we gotta go through the Z B A for that, but we wanted to, tonight, kind of get a level of comfort on the subdivision layout before we dove into the Z B A discussion. We did provide...
Yeah, Julian, I'm not sure that we can, I know we're having these discussions, but, until we know what's happening with that road, for sure, the, everything is speculative, so I don't, I would not recommend to this board, that they recommend to the Z B A, anything about setbacks where, where the plan is, is not real, right? It's, it's not viable until that happens, for sure. So, I mean, that's, that's been a threshold issue, it still is. But anyway, having said that, we can talk about whether, you know, maybe, if this works, you know, what the thought processes are, but there's also a lot of engineering to look at as well, Greg, and my, you know...
But again, I think we know a conversation needs to be upgraded. There's a pinch point still, on the right-of-way here, I'm sorry. Yes. A little pinch point, where a big easement on the right-of-way in there. But, you know, we, we haven't, we don't have a ton of engineering review yet, but again, until we know the road's going to actually be there at Gentry, it's kind of a moot point, too.
Okay. I, I think the last time you came before is the Hunter exit was actually under control at that point, so that's...
I couldn't remember, Carl had presented that before.
Yeah, I looked at the notes.
Okay.
So, we understand that, and I believe the last time Jamie said that, you know, we needed to see Gentry Drive fully under control. And one of the other things that we talked about was the setbacks along the existing neighbors, which would be on Tappan and on Cook, that we felt that we really didn't want to reduce the setbacks on those, because those people that own those homes expect the setback that, that the village sets forth. The ones in the center, at that point, they're new homes, people will know what they're going to get in terms of setback, at that point, you know, versus the people that have the existing homes. And we, we talked about that the last time, when...
Okay, so the board will be open to some setback adjustments on the lot in the middle, with long that one stream, one side, keeping 40 foot rear. Would you be open to reducing the front yard on that street?
And...
Put the lots here?
It doesn't have a name yet, I guess, we'll call it Hunter Drive.
Probably Hunter Drive.
I think that's discussion among the boards, what's everybody's thought on, on that?
So, to reduce the front.
Yeah. We'll leave the back at 40.
I guess, I mean, what we haven't seen is a plan that doesn't look for variances, and what does that look like? Because there's, there's a lot being, you know, requested, and there are, you know, I think that we should see some kind of a plan that doesn't ask for all these modifications, right? It might, it might reduce lots, I'm not, I'm not a site plan designer, by any means, but you're trying, you should try to avoid that, if, if possible, if the plan makes sense. We've talked about that, that pinch point that Greg was talking about before, I don't know if there's something that can be done on this, you know, other, this lot 15, or what, with property they've got, that's going to fix that. So, that's, you know, the access into this, into this whole development, which is a nice piece of property, that's great, should be developed, you know, within the code, is, is speculative until that pinch point thing is figured out, and, and the road is figured out. And then, you know, maybe, maybe there is a different way to configure these roads to get an appropriate number of lots, et cetera.
Yeah, we have...
Legal advice, okay? I mean, that's, that's again, for this board, or if you say, listen, we are just absolutely thrilled, we want smaller lots, we want the, I, I don't know.
I think that, I think that's actually where we were at the last meeting.
But I, you know, I think the board, this isn't talking, the board should talk about it.
Okay, yeah.
Not just me, not just Greg. And Terry, you have said some things.
Yeah, well, my notes seem to say the same thing, we didn't, because I brought my notes for this, no one we're having tonight, we weren't too excited about changing the setbacks.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sure. Yeah, the reason for the, looking at the setbacks and looking at it, is the lots are set up as 7,500 square foot lots, that's the zoning, with a 75-foot frontage, that leaves you, that you're going to have 100-foot depth. If you've got both a 40-foot front yard and a 40-foot backyard, that means you've got a 20-foot footprint to build a house in, you can't fit a garage in a 20-foot footprint. So fundamentally, the math doesn't work inside the way the zoning is set up. That's why, without having to go, every time you go to build a house, get a variance, say, let's look at this, so that we've got a little bit of room to position the houses, so that they fit. We're still governed by the footprint, so footprint won't let us build anything more than 25% of the area. So, we're not, you know, even with 7,500, we're still going to have 2,000, these are more, more, most of them are 10,000, so they have 2,500-foot footprint, you know, which is 400 in the garage, we're doing two-car garages, which is likely, you know, we're looking at, everybody lining, you know, E V cars, and they're putting them inside, and those types of things that we're going to see. That was why I looked at it and said, okay, if we're going to have only 20-foot to build that, I don't know if the project is viable with the zoning the way it is, without having enough room to put the houses to, to make sense. And that's where, that's where this started two and a half years ago, was that question saying, you know, it's a fundamental issue with the way the zoning is written, so that was part of, as far as the pinch goes, that's fine. And my conversations with the cemetery, as far as the road goes, the only, the only problem with building that road is, am I going to be able to get a 30-foot easement from them, from the center of the current road to the other edge? They didn't know it wasn't a dedicated road, when I talked to them, they thought that was already the case, and it was going to be just like Tappan, going around the bend. So to them, it was a non-event, talking to town, but just getting, getting somebody that has the authority to do something at River View isn't, I don't know, they just don't respond, so...
Kind of, kind of an integral piece, though, I think.
Absolutely. Oh, no, that's, that's kind of why I'm back here again, is I don't know if I, you know, I don't know if there's, I didn't create the problem, I'd love to fix it, I'd love to work with it to fix it, is it something that somebody from the village could say, hey, if this goes forward, we're going to need this, and get some, you know, some clarity, because if they don't respond to me, and they don't really need to, I, you know, can we ask that question? I'd be asked to give it...
I think, wouldn't we say, if this goes ahead, no matter what form it goes in, we would want that Gentry Drive?
Well, exactly, you're going to ask me for 30-foot, even if I don't build it.
Well, you know, the, I mean, another option is to put a road access somewhere else, right?
No, well, there's no other 60-foot, there's no other conforming place, Tappan is 52 feet or 54 feet, where I got it off of Tappan.
Well, it can be, it can be a new village road that comes in, if they won't... Well, it can be a, it can be a new village road that comes in if they won't cooperate.
But I have no reason to believe, I've talked to Tom over there, he's, he's like, he didn't, it was a nine event, he didn't think it was going to be a big deal at all. Just got to get the right person and, you know.
I'm not following what you're asking.
Well, you're trying to come in and use Gentry Road. If you can't use it, you have a plan. Again, I'm not a designer, but what other way can you get in there and put lots?
Well, if we don't have Gentry, then it's just off of.
Tappan.
Tappan's that wide, we tried that.
We'd have to get a variance for that.
What's wrong with Tappan?
It's only 50 foot right of way.
This here.
Yeah.
I think we saw.
What about at the top?
There was the original plan we brought in, was going through there, but since we couldn't access where Hunter is now, Ken Ernman's estate owned it. That was back a couple of years ago. It became available. It was 2022.
But not at the upper part of Tappan?
I don't know that I'd like to create something that has all the lots backing up to the existing Gentry, because that's what, that's what happened then. You have a bunch of backyards backing up to a road. It's not ideal.
I don't think, I don't think the road right of way is going to be negotiable as far as the width for it to be a village road. So that's sort of, that's a, that's a given, right? So.
Right, 60 foot.
Right, 60 foot. So we know that, so that's a given. So you've got to get 60, 60 feet, and it's either got to be up, up by, it's got to be Gentry, you know, extended, which, you know, the cemetery, or there is, there is some other space.
Yeah, I'm.
You know, I don't.
I'm going to pursue the cemetery and get them to put something in writing, an ovation. I mean, they verbally stated and don't have an issue with it, but it's just getting the right person. I've tried to reach Mr. Farrell, Charlie Farrell's supposed to be on the board, but he's retired and hasn't been responsive, so.
So Carl's going to pursue, get the letter, and if we get that, we'll proceed, but we still like to talk about the setbacks. So originally, you guys were open to the idea, and now maybe you're not open to the idea?
No, I mean, originally, again, nothing, nothing existing was ever, that was never, you know.
I think lots 15 through 26, I don't think we were ever in agreement that that should stay at 30.
No, I was saying, like, 10 minutes ago, we talked about leaving the rear yard on that 40, and you guys think about maybe 30 in the front yard.
I think you couldn't do 40 and 30 is what we were, under the impression it would be 40 in the back, 20 in the front. And would we be palatable to 20 in the front? I don't know that.
No, I don't know.
We'd have to discuss that.
We never mentioned.
No, we're just looking for.
It's 40 and 40.
40, so it'd be 40 in back and then 30 in front.
Yeah. Originally, we sketched it, it was like, we knew we needed some variance, so we pushed them both front and rear, so it opened up a discussion, say, which is better, front or rear? And that's really what it was to do, was to try and entice us into this dialogue here and get some pinch point.
Well, the, I mean, the other option is, there just can't be as many lots. But again, that's just a thing, and maybe it's not a viable project for, if there's less lots, but.
That's the obvious answer.
So I think that's where we left previously, one of the last statements was, we may not be able to fit this many lots, given the way it's laid out currently.
Right, exactly.
Right.
That is correct. That was, I watched them, me, Terry.
Right, we agree. We need desirable setbacks to make this work. Is this something that we can, you guys would consider?
I think, as Jamie mentioned, we'd like to see some alternatives to what you could do that didn't require change in zoning.
Well, variances, not change in zoning. Are we talking variances or change in zoning? So they come back showing how different houses would fit if we had or didn't have setbacks, that kind of?
Yep. I think ultimately.
And how you heard you're going to solve that Hunter Drive problem.
Yeah.
And the other one is obvious, Gentry is just another cemetery.
So we're, I don't, I've played with this 100 different ways over the last few years. The yield is cut by probably 40% doing anything. Basically, you're going to go wider lots, deeper lots, and cul-de-sacs. The only way, the only way to do it is with cul-de-sacs. Because I can't get a road through, and if I can't utilize both sides of that road, economically, it's, it's, you know, there's no profit. And you can't, the lot cost would exceed the viable, viable, you know, for what's there. That was the whole viability thing since, since the very beginning, was looking at it, saying, geez, I've got 20 foot to put a house on, it's not, it doesn't work, but the zoning worked, you know, 7,500, the smaller lots, and doing that, it does work. We already have expanded to 10,000 square foot lots from 7,500. So they are bigger than the minimum conforming thing, but even there, it's, it'll probably work with a 30 foot setback. That much I knew a long time ago. With 40 and 40, it's difficult. You know, 30 foot, you can put something decent out. You have a 20 foot, maybe a 10 foot room behind it, you know, and then basically we left with a 30 by, oh, 29, 39, 30 by 39 foot for the house. So 12, 1300 square foot home and a two car garage. You know, that's what you left so they can stay on one lot. With a 30 foot, with a 20 foot, you've got the little 700 square foot, one car garage home that around Ford and around that area that we're built to the before. That's probably when that was, and that's where they could have been. I don't know, I wasn't there that, I wasn't, I wasn't doing this in 1950s, so.
What's your total acreage here?
Eighteen and a half.
So that's, that's why the whole question of, you know, going, I didn't need 10 and 10. It was the idea of, you know, do we have 10 on some, 20, you know, 10 on the other, front and rear, so they have different opposing setbacks, rather than having them all in a line, you know, it's just a way to possibly spice it up. But to try and build on a 20 foot footprint doesn't work.
Do you guys have some comments?
No, we're just trying to remember if they're single, and why we weren't going to build up to take advantage of square footage up, and I was just bringing aside that they're single.
Market looks like right now with those types of houses, most, may have lots, second bedroom, third bedroom, office type of thing, you know, Cape Cod style perhaps, but two-story colonial styles, not thinking that that's the market to be there for that, so.
I mean, I think Barnum Minium was.
Well, it was one of the ideas we had, using lifts and elevators, you know, so it's like a raised ranch where you come in, but you're still able to cater to the demographic, the population that wants to have a motorcycle and their boat and go upstairs to lift. But it's certainly there. Now, that's, that's where some of those ideas come into play, and then having some flexibility for placement tells us whether or not we can do it. And, you know, so that's, that's where I look back, rather than, rather than the idea of, okay, we've got to get somebody that wants to build this on this lot, I've got to go to a, each, each month, I'm going to a zoning board of appeals to try and get a house to fit. I don't want to, I don't want to play that. I just assume, have it so that it fundamentally works and everyone knows what we're getting into going in.
Craig, did you have any comments?
Not necessarily. I think, I think where their thing came up with the possibility of reducing the front yard was a former chairman wanted to look at the setbacks in general in the village. And this, you know, village should adopt something with closer setbacks. That was just a kind of an informal discussion at the planning board meeting. So I think that's where that may have kind of come from. You know, I mean, I could see some changes I would make, just to, it might help, like moving, moving this road over here a little bit, give these lots a little more depth. But it all depends on what, what kind of house that we were trying to put in this property, and it really.
For sure.
You know, if it's, if it's an old fashioned, little bungalow village type house, it'd probably fit okay, you know, if it's something that Barnum Minium, it's probably not going to fit that well.
You're more in line with what the market's calling for, actually, the little bungalows, but people are looking for two car garages.
Yeah.
So they start looking at the footprint with a 14 to 1600 square foot, and you've got 2,000, 2,200 square foot footprint on the parcel, which fits with a 10,000 square foot that's in line with the zoning, except again, there's still room to put that size property with 20, or 40, 40 feet. So 30 and 40 works. You know, which way to put it, so we put it both when we did this concept. Not looking for both, we wanted to.
Can you just summarize again, which lots would need the variances, the way you've got it laid out right here?
Need?
Well, would require.
It's actually what we're looking for was to have a blanket 30 foot setback front or rear, rather than 40 and 40.
On average.
Across the board, keep it consistent across the board, so that that would give us that room to plant a 2,500 square foot house in a 10,000 square foot lot, or 20, it wouldn't be a 2,500 square foot house, but it would be an 1,800 square foot ranch, which is pretty typical, and add a two car garage.
I can't speak for the board, but I, myself, confirm about keeping the setbacks for the village code on all of the properties that border the existing homes.
Understood.
Rear setbacks.
To start, that's square one for me.
The rear yard setback at 40 for them. Yep, we agree with that.
I would agree.
Whether you think you want to reduce the front yard setbacks for this development, I think we need to discuss.
I mean, I think imaging would be nice, like, here's what this whole row house is going to look like, and here's where they're going to sit, and here's how far back they're going to be. It's, you know, it's.
Basically put a footprint on it.
Yeah, we did that.
I mean, like, a visual, like we saw.
We did one year.
On the PDD.
Three minutes ago. So we can do that.
Like, you know, a drawing.
We had five or six footprints, and we laid out any.
And show it, like, all in a row, and that's what this neighborhood is going to look like, right? Because maybe it's fine.
If there's articulation depending on the style of the house, it would be good to know that as well, I think. You know, I think all of us would agree in the village, there are various setbacks on the older homes.
Of course.
But our, our new zoning is pretty, you know, to the point on that, that there isn't all of that give and take.
We walked away from that cul-de-sac idea, where you were just saying, I don't want to do it, or it's not workable.
Well, it's, well, it's still, it's, Gentry still needs to come in.
Right.
Okay, because we're not going, I don't think the fire folks would like me bringing from Hunter all the way up to backing up to something just off of Tappan, maybe 7, 900 feet of, to a cul-de-sac. The safety side of that's going to blow the hell out of the water, I know that.
So I don't know, but what a couple of entrances of cul-de-sacs, if that's, if that's viable, if this board at all wants to look at that, and then it might solve that Hunter Drive problem, or get more than one entrance off of Gentry. Again, I'm just no better than.
You know, it doesn't hurt to throw some free innovation, so generally, I personally am not a fan of cul-de-sacs.
I think it's more.
I'm saying it's periodism. If we don't have to, normally that's the.
I'm one person.
No, I mean, I think if we're trying to stay in line with the village.
Just directly with the village, yeah.
I mean, this is closer to, I think, what, what we would want to see.
Now, under the 30 foot setback, recall that you've got 18 feet before pavement, so it's 48 foot to the front of the house from the edge of pavement, because you have 60 foot. The 30 foot starts after, outside of the 60 foot right of way. 18 feet to the edge of pavement, and then, you know.
Depending on the house.
Well, at 30.
The house is still outside.
The house has still got to be outside.
If you build a smaller house, it changes the dynamic.
Yeah, yeah. But you're still 48 foot back, even with a 30 foot setback.
All right. So visually, it will look better along the Tappan road, because you have that extra space, even though it's not part of the road.
No, because those are backyards along Tappan. The yards, they front on Hunter Drive Extension.
It's going to be over here.
Yeah.
So it's backyard to backyard for the people on.
This is back to back.
Tappan.
Cook and Tappan, we're looking to make sure that they maintain.
This is probably.
40.
Right.
That's a.
Here, this is new, so we've tried to do 35.
Here, here.
Yeah, because this is the new.
And those would be okay.
Maybe tomorrow, but these would be the other way, because they're existing.
Kevin, do you have a question?
No, we've just determined what they were saying down there, this is front to back, so that's why.
Yeah, right.
Just clarifying where I am.
Yes.
So we're all on the same kind of thought line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We felt it was important previously, still do, it sounds like, to maintain those backyards against the existing homes.
Yeah, I think that should be, because like you say, they bought and expected it.
I agree.
It's not that you can expect that nothing will happen with the property, but you can expect that the setback will be maintained.
The village will stick to the rule.
Right, right.
Build could be different, but it's.
That's easy. That's easy, because we are deeper on those lots. It actually isn't hard, that's not a hard press, those are the easiest ones to accommodate, and the ones against Tappan is really fundamentally, you know, deciding whether or not we lose a lot or two for when we finish our drainage calculations. We're just trying to get a layout that the board likes before he spends, you know, a month putting together drainage calculations.
So you want to.
That don't, will change.
I think, just speaking for myself, I'd like to see the road thing, at least in writing.
Yes.
I had my journey forward, letters were intent so they could sign it.
Yeah, so maybe after you get that sewed up, then maybe you reverse some correction to your.
We went through a few scenarios for you with the idea that that would come. I think we need to see it come before we go through another scenario.
Yep.
That's my opinion.
That's what we decide on the last.
I guess, would there be a point of contact that I could direct the cemetery to, so they could talk to somebody in the village, say, yeah, this is something we need to.
Whoever's in charge of the highway, I would think.
Yeah.
Which isn't Chuck anymore.
It would be the DPW, but not Chuck, although there's a, I see there's a new.
Right, there's a new guy, starting.
I don't.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, maybe just start contacting them.
Okay. Yeah, we'd work with him. Very good. Not Greg.
Oh, you're up. He was back.
He should have introduced himself. So I think, I think that's where we stand at this point. We appreciate you coming in for conversation. I, you know, I don't, I think if the cemetery talks to the DPW, that would probably be the best course of action.
Correct.
Excellent.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. So next on new business, we have the change in the meeting dates that, um, everybody could attend except Andrew on the November meeting. Um, so that the November meeting, which was the twenty. The new meeting date for November is the nineteenth, which is a week earlier. And for December, it is December seventeenth, which is also a week earlier. So we're off the twenty-fourth of December and the twenty-sixth of November. And we're expecting the public hearing, um, application notice to be filed.
Yep, yep.
Now that, tomorrow, tomorrow for Brown's boundary for the public hearing.
Yes.
At the November nineteenth.
Is there a request by this board that any adjoining neighbors be notified? Public hearing. So we can have our clerk.
Yeah, no, I, I think that we should.
Notify, notify adjoining neighbors.
Yep.
Okay. So I'll send you the couple of notices and then.
I think she just said that this is just on the agenda, right, Jamie, that the deadline is.
Oh, I, I just looked at, I just looked and it's the two and four.
Yeah, this is, this is.
So that'll move back a week as well?
Yes, this is the, kind of the old agenda. Because we were supposed to.
I didn't know how that worked if, because it's taking a week.
No, it moves back. It moves back. It legally has to be that timeframe.
So the, the notice should go in the local newspaper about the change of the meeting dates?
Yep.
Okay. The messenger? The messenger is fine. And it should be published on the website and published in the town hall. Tacked, tacked up in the town hall.
Villatall.
Villatall.
That one too.
We will have comments for you on Paul's Island and Brown's Boundary, hopefully by end of next week.
Okay.
We're working on it, we just, we just gotta.
Yeah, we did ask some questions about Brown's Boundary, how they were handling the explain, how they were handling the water. We asked about the aesthetic side of that, and he said they were not that far yet, but they were trying to make it an amenity, which I, you know, I was kind of trying to get information for everybody else.
Yeah, we walked, it's, there's an existing, there's some existing drainage issues on the site primarily on SA due to existing pipe piping too small.
Oh, okay.
Things that'll have to be changed part of site plan approval. They can do a nice job there, though. I think they can, through there. And, and the drainage can be solved, issues. But again, we're just, we're going through revised traffic, revised, or a new slip and stuff. And that's gonna need to be further progressed. At this point, our main concern is, you know, do we agree with their mitigation methods? And can the final mitigation be accomplished on that site?
Okay.
And, you know, and the details can always come as.
Right, he said that the runoff from the other side will continue as it is, but then they're mitigating the water on this property?
Yes, that, well, so everything on this property is gonna have to be, you know, assuming it's gonna meet all of DC standards, and there won't be any need for variances, that sort of thing. We are, though, concerned about getting the water through the property. So from, from off-site, they still have to accommodate that, whether it's, there's a pipe, a large pipe that comes into the site, a small pipe that goes out, there's also a lot of flows and that sort of thing.
That's what he was showing us on the plan, that exit, pretty much what it does.
Yeah, yeah, I, the actual thing's fine. It's an old, very old pipe that's like a, either twelve or fifty inch pipe. And it's gonna, you know, it's got a twenty-four inch coming in, plus all these surface runoffs, that sort of thing. But those have to be all accommodated somehow coming through the site. So there's, there's stuff there to work out, which we're digesting.
Okay, it's a lot to look at, I know.
Yeah, and in three days, four days, we'll get through it.
We appreciate it.
We're gonna try to get through it, you know, by end of next week to give you the board a chance to.
We all have a chance to kind of study it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I filed this for being late. I got, I got stuck in executive session with another talented.
They can't be as important as we.
I was pounding tables. I had to leave. I warned them from the beginning that I needed to be off by like six forty-five, and they had the ceremony for mayor of the village of Salve. And it took like forty-five minutes. I'm like, come in, come in a room. I'm like, I gotta like leave like now. So I filed that, so. Maybe we are doing nothing. I can text you or something like that.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Just so you know, I forgot.
I inquired about you. So I'm gonna take two minutes here and turn the meeting over to Mr. Miller, and we'd love to know a little bit about him.
All right. Name's James Miller. My wife and I and our son have lived in the village for fifteen years. We live at Tappan Division, right on the corner.
Yes, someone else on the other side.
Right across from the entrance to the Riverside Cemetery, which is actually quite nice, because we know there's no housing going there. Quiet neighborhood. We raised our son here. He went through, of course, the whole, you know, elementary school right behind us, and then went through Bville B's, and he's now at SUNY Buffalo. My wife is the current director of the Chamber of Commerce for the village, Mary Ann Williams, different last name. My past history, I have been a procurement, supply chain, logistics executive for about thirty-five years. I worked for Mackenzie Childs as a director and a member of their executive board for eight and a half years. I built their warehouse, two hundred and ten thousand square feet in, just south, north of Phoenix. I did that just before I decided I was leaving because of COVID. That was taken from a shell through to their new state-of-the-art facility. So I'm somewhat familiar with building code and how that gets done. And currently, I work with a software company that implements enterprise resource planning software for Microsoft as a senior functional consultant. And so that's me.
Well, welcome. Glad to have a new member.
Yeah.
And we are still seeking an alternate, people. If anybody, knows anybody with some planning, zoning, background, architectural, anything that's, you know, there are so many things related to this legal, you know, that are related to the processes that we follow, that it would be wonderful to have some expertise. Everybody here has a niche, and I'd like to see that continue. Thank you. I'd like to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty. Could I have a motion to do that, please? Andrew, second?
Kevin.
Kevin?
Kevin. I was second.
So Luke, okay. Could I vote to, vote for the meeting?
All right.
Hi.
Like that was unanimous. Michelle, one. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, viewers.